Let's see, it's 1:30, the board's here. Do you want to consider the meeting to be open? Though we don't have Dennis yet.
Sure, consider it open.
But while we're waiting for Dennis, I think there are a couple of things. One, in August, 112 budget. The state wants separate votes on each month. And the other thing that happened is the state is insisting that we budget at least 112 of our normal budget every month, even if, like in July, dramatically over the total for 112. I'm not saying it bears any rhyme or reason. I think it's unfortunately for them, they're saying this is the way this law is written, 112. So Sandy made some adjustments in the debt schedule, not that we're going to pay the debt early or anything, but she moved some of the debt money to August to cover the difference between what we would have thought we were going to spend and what the 112 was. So there are copies available to the board by your places on the buffet there. Here, Pam, if you want to come by and pick them up at some point. But otherwise, if the board were to approve that 112 budget, that would be helpful.
So move.
Second.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Dennis, are you the 617, sorry, 617, 610?
No, that's me, that's me.
Okay.
Because I couldn't get on, I don't know, my broadband was low.
Okay. Well, can you wait? So the only other thing, Bob, you mentioned there's no new reports of COVID.
Nope, there's no new reports of COVID. There is a new reporting site on the DPH website for the general public to call the Board of Health with any concerns that they have about how any of the restaurants are reopening. Today, Lakeside Villa should be reopening. I plan on going over there on an inspection right after our conference call. I've already been to the horse show. I have to admit, I was very pleased. They're taking temperatures right when you get inside the entrance. Everybody had masks on. There's markers for social distancing. There's extra sanitizer and hand wash stations around. And the head of their COVID force, they hired an outside person, gave me his name and number, and we've been in contact. And so far, things seem to be going quite well there.
Great, good to hear.
Yeah, right. I mean, with no spectators, it does make it a lot easier. I think the people are there getting, you know? So pleasant surprise. And then next week, no, the 28th, 27th or 28th, that's when Grill 58 will be opening up. I just had a nice conversation with Dave, came into the office. I gave him a full list, and we'll do a walkthrough on Monday, because he wants to be 100% compliant. So that's where we're trending right now.
Very good.
Let me see if I have access, so on my phone here. Or actually, I think I have it in the same place.
Bob, while Charlie's not, just a quick question. Did you meet with the new, we went over today and met with the new owners of the pizza place on the side of the fire station? It's going to be, it's going to be called Rodney's Kitchen?
Rodney's, yeah.
He, when we were talking to him today, we checked the ansel system, and he indicated he was looking to open as soon as possible. I told him to wait for, Rob will be back on, you know, obviously Rodney will be back.
Right, the only, now, on my end, as far as from a food safety standpoint, they have provided me with all the appropriate information that I need. I do have to do a walkthrough.
Dennis, hi, it's Charlie.
Last night on our board meeting, the board wants to see.
I didn't know whether you were going to be phoning into the meeting.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Didn't have some kind of issue that they had to, they had to take care of, that it got taken care of, I think.
Yeah, let me do that, I'm going to do that again right now. Right, so give, so give, I'm going to, I'm going to hang up, I'm going to, give me a minute to text it to you, and then I'll tell everybody you'll be on in a couple of minutes. Okay, no problem. Hey, look, bye-bye.
Okay, chief, so, yeah, the board's going to have them on hold until the next meeting, because we need a septic plan, so that we know it's going to get repaired, and how they're going to repair it.
Gotcha.
So there's no rush over there, but thank you for inspecting the ansel.
No problem.
You know that the septic system is actually, the field is up on Country Club Drive, right?
I'm not sure where it is.
Yeah, yeah, it's pumped, it's kind of, it's pumped quite a ways out, but neither here nor there, just mentioning it.
No, I appreciate that. Also, we'll be visiting 163 Plymouth Street this afternoon.
That'll be fun, fun time.
Hey, Bob, I drove by there today. I'm going to have one of my guys meet you guys up there at 3 o'clock, but I drove by there this morning, and it looks like some activity there. Looked like they were putting some tops on a couple of the boats there. I'm not sure if they're planning on removing them, or keeping them in the property and just covering them up. I'm not, I wasn't sure, but I did, there were two gentlemen there, working out in the lot, you know, in the, in the front lawn, yeah.
Well, I told him from a, from a public health issue, that I had, you know, environmental concerns and health concerns. Those boats being open, they're just going to take water on, and that's a mosquito breeding ground. So all kinds of tank cans and buckets, which could easily get spilt into our ponds or into the groundwater supplies. So when he set up my meeting for today, I think he's trying to maybe make a good first impression, but I'm not even sure he owned, he's supposed to be living in the place.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I know I spoke to Alan this morning, when he stopped by, and so then I drove by there, and he was, it looks like, like despite what he was doing, then he was probably covering the boats up, to limit the amount of water that, you know, will fill up on those things.
Has anyone spoken to the bank?
Yeah, Alan did this morning. He said he'd give us details at 3:00.
Okay, good, good.
I did talk to Dennis. He is going to be phoning in. I needed to send him the Zoom information. He had it worked, but he was on his cell phone, so I've texted the information to him, and he should be on momentarily.
Charlie, quick question. I know on Tuesday night, the board was going to discuss more about what to do with the CARES Act money. Was that, I didn't get to see the meeting, but was there a lot of other ideas presented?
Yeah, there were a number of ideas. A lot of it was PPE-type stuff, or building infrastructure changes. For instance, I know Gene Galott had sent in something for ventilation systems, as an example. I still need to make copies of everything for the board, and give it to the board for review for the meeting on July 28th. If you want.
Oh, sorry, Charlie, it's Bob. I did put in a request through IT to see if I could get a iPad for the Health Department with the number of field inspections.
Yeah, the problem is, it's not COVID-related.
Well, if I'm out on COVID inspections in the field?
We can try.
I know in Marshfield, they bought, I don't know how many laptops for people to work at home.
Right. Well, and the lap, the, they were very specific about the laptops and the Chromebooks and such, that if these were for students or for employees working from home, that they could do, you know, that that was allowable expense. Let me take another look at it, see, and we'll see how flexible they're going to be.
Okay, yeah, I just, if I drop this out in the field, it's going to break, and I don't want to break this, of course, great.
So Dennis is here.
I am.
Whoa.
Hi, Dennis.
Hello there, how are you, sir?
Okay.
Just grand.
Yeah.
Because of the timing of our schedule on the board's selectmen meeting, next time, the regular meeting is the 28th, the, what I suggested was Dennis come in and meet with you all again, to continue the recess of the town meeting, this time from August 1st to either August 22nd or 29th. I don't have a preference between those two dates, simply because I don't think it's going to be material, in that it's already the 16th. I don't see the state budget obviously getting done by August 1st, but the state legislature has been even slow to acknowledge they're not getting their work done, in that they officially have to recess on July 31st. I know they sometimes play games with the State House clock, or the ones in their legislative chambers, and sort of freeze, somehow that clock gets broken at 11:55, and doesn't seem to move at all, but I don't think they can keep that up for a number of days. I think they're going to have to vote to actually extend the legislative session. They haven't done that yet. But setting that aside, I don't see them getting a budget done by August 31st. I'm not even sure they'll get one done within a reasonable amount of time in August, in the sense of, you know, if they got it done on August 5th or something, maybe we could have a town meeting, but I think it's going to be later than that. So sort of with a whole card of the possibility we're going to move into September ultimately, the problem for the state law is that Dennis cannot recess the meeting more than another 30 days after the current date, the August 1st date. So I don't know, like I said, it really doesn't matter to me, the 22nd and 29th, that the board has preferences. If Bob does, and they can talk with Dennis about it, and figure out which date you want to go with, and then I can read off the resolution that Dennis would have to sign, you know, later this week or next week. So, you know, whatever date you all want to do.
Why don't we go with the 29th, just to give ourselves some room?
Yeah, that would be my thought as well.
Yeah, so would I.
Sounds good. Okay, so the, what Dennis would, how it's been saying is, the idea is karma being the town moderator for the town of Halifax, in consultation with the Board of Health Agent and Board of Selectmen for the town of Halifax, in accordance with the authority vested me by Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, hereby declare the annual town meeting, a special town meeting, the town of Halifax, previously called pursuant to ward, to take place on June 15, 2020, and then recess in July 11, 2020, and then to August 1, 2020, shall be recessed again and continued to 9:00 AM on August 29th, and will take place at the Halifax Elementary School.
Now, the 29th, is that a Saturday? We're doing, we're, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to probably, we're, I'm aiming for September 12th, that's the last Saturday that's doable in order to get the tax rate and the tax bills done on schedule. My hope is, and expectations is, the state budget will be done by then. But I don't necessarily have an expectation that the state budget will be done sufficiently ahead of August 29th, that will give the Finance Committee and the townspeople enough time to bring themselves up to speed by August 29th, and be able to vote legitimately on that date.
Charlie?
The, go ahead, go ahead.
Just, can we do estimated bills?
Yeah.
Can?
Yeah.
That's what I was just going to bring up. We're going to prepare in the Assessors' Office for estimated bills. It's a bit of a horror show, but we're going to be, we're going to proceed with it so as to be ready if we needed to do that. There's a tremendous impact down the road, because at some point, people are going to get much higher bills, because they're going to be paying back taxes, if you will. So hopefully, we can avoid that, but, but we're going to prepare for it at the Board of Assessors in any event.
Tom, can you set the estimate for half of what the Finance Committee recommends?
You're talking about set the tax rate, you mean?
Yes.
No, we'd have to, we'd have to use the tax rate that we had last time. And it's a bit of a horror show. I can go over it with you at some point. It's a little complicated.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, Tom's correct, in that the SMA bill has to be equal to what, one half of what the previous bill was.
Right.
Part of the horse show is not just the change, is the, let's say, instead of 50-50, it ends up being 46-54, or something like that. The other part is just even explaining to people why their bill is different in May than it was in November.
Yeah, and it could be considerably different, and that's going to cause a lot of consternation. So if we can actually get to a point where we can send out an accurate tax bill, it's better for everybody.
So, so Dennis, are you good for August 29th? You don't have to take a vote, you just tell us and we'll have this.
No, that, that works for me, and I think I would just echo what everybody else, I think, is, is saying without saying, is that the continuation of us trying to communicate not only what we're doing, but why, so that people aren't thinking anybody's being put off for any unreasonable thing. I mean, you occasionally see people out on media complaining about, oh, now they're moving it to Saturday, and, and they're not stopping to think of why that might be. So I think that, as we continue, and Charlie, you do a good job with this, is just to communicate what's happening and why. We're in better shape. People's frustrations are high, people's, you know, confused, upset, nobody, you know, I mean, I think the massive cabin fever that people are, are going through, and, you know, some of the tough times, and so many people being unemployed. I think we just need to continue to say, we'd love to meet earlier and get this resolved, but we can't until the state does its business. And we want to do it in a way that's safe. So that's why we're looking at the way we're looking at it, in terms of what day we do it, and where we're going to end up doing it. So I think, I think we're all in agreement with that.
Yeah, well said. Absolutely. Well, very well said.
Dennis, the, if we have to do the two rooms or outside, do you have a preference?
I've said this to Charlie, because one of the things that I struggle with, as you may know, is my vision. So the farther apart we are, different rooms, different distances, what I'm probably going to need are some pretty expert spotters, so that we don't have people feeling they're disenfranchised because of my disability. But no, I will do whatever is going to work for the safest, you know, situation, and it won't have people feeling like they're not being able to fully participate in the process. You know, you come right down to it, with all the frustrations, I wouldn't be surprised if we're going to struggle to get a quorum once we set town meeting. Nonetheless, I just don't want people having an excuse to complain about something, because I think the town really bends over backwards, trying to make sure everybody gets to participate. And, and I know that one of the things that I've witnessed in the, in the past moderators is, they do a good job of trying to make sure that everybody gets heard. And so, long and short of it is, I will bow to the public safety aspects of it, and both the health end of it, and what the police force thinks in terms of what's the best way to do town meeting, and then just rely on volunteers, spotters and whatnot, to make sure we know what people are wanting to do and say.
The problem I foresee with outside is, if we have inclement weather for a couple of days, you're still going to have to prepare inside, just in case. I don't know how that works, but.
Yeah, rain dates are tricky things, and if we're already putting them off, you know, it's tough. It is tough to do that, but, you know. So it's out of our control. Out of our control. We can rely on people's goodwill more than anything else. All right, so, 2020 works for now, and, and we'll just keep, keep monitoring everything, right?
Yes.
All right. Then Charlie, you said you're, you're heading out for some time away?
Yes.
Enjoy and relax. Try not to think about anything related to the town of Halifax.
I, the only thing I'm promising.
Good luck with that, Charlie.
I hear you. Yeah.
Okay. Board, chiefs, Bob, anything else?
Not for me.
All set.
For fogging, Charlie. I spoke with Scott Materna and Matt Durkey about this again, and the safety for the children. We never actually got anything back from the manufacturer. The only thing we got from the distributor was basically saying that a recommended use is in educational and school setting. So, and it says, after it's dried, it's safe after it's dried or wiped off. I'm not sure what else we'll get on that, or Gordon had, is on that, any, if we can get anything definitive. But after looking at the UV light systems, I just don't see how, and speaking with Matt Durkey, I think that the UV light angle is going to be very difficult. So, but I'm not sure if, I know you, you're on the task force for the reopening of schools, but if there's been any other conversations on that.
So we received a letter from the unions, all four districts did, asking all sorts of questions about the reopening. So our first meeting is next week. So I might come back and ask some more questions to you guys after the first meeting.
What Scott received from them, especially if a question comes up specific to the fogging operation?
Okay.
The board is posted for both Monday and Thursday next week, up in the Great Hall at 1:30. So, and obviously, any COVID-related stuff can be covered.
Okay. Is there any issues you guys want me to bring up for the reopening, for the, for the first meeting? Are there any? Is there a preference that the board, or the chiefs, or Charlie, anyone has, for whether or not we reopen or not, so that I know that going into the meeting?
This is me just talking, you know, Bob. I, I understand the urge to reopen the schools, in the sense of educationally, it's probably the best thing for everybody, the students, the parents, teachers, everybody involved, in the sense of, it gets us, not just, you know, the idea of it gets us back to normal, but in terms of the outcomes, there are far fewer problems for parents, in terms of their jobs, and not being able to get childcare and anything else that they have to worry about, for the kids, both the social aspect, but also the educational aspect. But, you know, the big asterisk, and it's not any surprise, is you got to do it safely. So, I mean, there are examples from Europe and such, where there are, and I know that Europe is not the US, and vice versa, and everything like that, but, so, you know, and every school system's going to be different. New York City is different than some rural county out in Montana or someplace, or even us. So I don't, I certainly am not the person to ask what the solutions are. I know, but I don't want, you know, Halifax or Massachusetts in general to end up as part of any slide backwards due to the school system, because, I mean, as much as I can point at Europe, as they seem to be making things work, I can point at Israel, where the schools ended up being a prime place for the transmission. So, and that may be different cultures and everything, I don't know, but I don't, you know, Gordon, you picked the wrong year to be chair. Or got volunteered to be chair. So no, I don't have any good ideas. I think long, because I, losing more time educationally is going to be very difficult for everybody to make up. It's not, you know, I saw somebody point, say, you know, you can always make up education, you can't make up lives, and I understand the point, that the lives are more important than, and not just kids, the teachers, family members of everybody involved are more important. And, you know, if I'm going to have to go with what's more important, the lives are, you know, not getting people sick, but as much as we can, if there are solutions, you know, whatever, it's the partial, for instance, it's difficult, it's not going to be to try, you know, see what can be done, as long as it can be done safely. I guess that's, which is so general and nonspecific, it's probably not helpful, but that's my two cents.
I, I was informed yesterday that there was a 12-year-old baseball team in Marshfield that was quarantined, because one of the kids tested positive. So I guess my feelings have changed in the last day or two, whether or not I'm leaning towards reopening or not. Anyone else have any feedback to bring to the meeting?
Unfortunately, I think you're just in a difficult situation, that even taking the science aside, I mean, well, some of it's not even clear. People are so polarized on both sides of that issue, that I think that no matter what you decide, it is, is not going to sit well with probably half of the, you know, half of the parents out there. So it's a, it's a really difficult decision you have moving forward.
You could always do a giant Zoom meeting, Gordon, and have, invite all the parents to give you their opinion, if you're brave enough.
Well, I did, I did post on Facebook, and copied the survey, and asked people to, give me direct feedback, but that's a good idea, Tom, I can try that.
Yeah, just give them the opportunity to voice, you know, regardless of how it ends up.
Well, I agree with the chief, it's going to be difficult for half of the population to accept, especially if we get people sitting out here having rallies about wearing masks. It's just a large group.
Yeah, it's been a lot of years since I've had any kids in the school system, but at one point, I had four. And if they were in the system today, I think I'm, I'm sort of where Charlie might be, where I'm anxious to get everybody back, I'm anxious for the world to kind of turn in the right direction, but I don't think it should be done at a potential risk of any one kid. And yet, if, if the decision is made to either wait or delay, or do remote schooling, the virtual teaching still, I think there needs to be a light at the end of the tunnel. I think we need to have a plan that says, if we're not going to return to school physically, if we do, we have to have a plan for that, but if we're not, we still need a plan of when is the timing going to be appropriate. I think delay is not a bad idea, but people are going to want to know, when are you going to do it? When can we see it? Because they're dealing with childcare issues, they're dealing with, you know, their own employment situations, whether they're employed or hoping to get back to work. So, but I, I would tend to err on the side of caution, in terms of the safety of the children, more than anything else.
Gordon, have they set up any type of situation where kids can be tested before you go back to school?
We haven't talked about that yet, Troy. That.
Because it would make, it would make common sense to at least know where you're starting off with, whether you have kids infected or not, to go back to school.
So I know that the temperature checks that were talked about originally have been deemed not an okay thing to do by Desi.
That's interesting.
If they can't do temperature checks, I don't see how they're going to be willing to accept testing. I mean, whether, I mean, if we're talking about this statewide, what is, in kids, something like that? I mean, if they can't, they're not able to keep, I don't know about Massachusetts, because of the low rates right now. I don't know whether we have the testing capability, what the turnaround's going to be. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I think it's a good idea, I just don't know that we're capable of doing it.
Okay. Bob, did you have any feedback for me to bring?
Well, I can't give you a when. It's impossible, because, you know, in the fall, we don't know how this virus will actually react. I don't want to sound like doom and gloom, but I think that people might start to get lax, and I always err in an abundance of caution, and this is certainly what we want to happen, but from a public health standpoint, I don't think it's the right thing to happen. what we want to happen, but from a public health standpoint, um, I don't think it's the right thing to happen.
So you'd be more comfortable with just starting off remote than?
Yeah, remotely or or even just something like baby steps, you know, could you do two days in school, three days out of school? Um, try to follow the lead of any success story, but I mean, I I just I care about the children. I care about everybody, but, you know, there's always a special affinity in my heart for for youngsters and um their abilities to um to handle what will need to be done in the school environment and the supervision of the teachers is gonna be a very, very difficult thing to try to um maintain and force. I'd err on the side of caution.
Good.
Go ahead, gotcha.
I I had spoken with someone from another community and what they did was they sent out a survey to parents and said, even if we decide to open, yeah, that is there a group of people who will not send their children to school anyway? And pretty much they put it in, it sounds like they're, I don't think they have any definite plans yet, but they're putting it in the parents' hands and they're and based on the responses that get from parents, um, you'll they anticipate having a large group that will not send their children even if they do open and then working on setting up whether it be individualized education plans for the students to do basically homeschooling um for that group. So unless you really knew know that, what if if there is a potential large group that won't send their kids back, I think that'd be a helpful piece of information.
So I believe that was in part of the um survey that we sent out this week.
Gordon, is the setting up um guidelines or recommendations or are they leaving it up to each school board to come up with uh with plans?
Well, they gave recommendations last week and now they want us to take those recommendations, create our own recommendations for the elementary schools and for Silver Lake and then send those back by July 31st so they can review them. So they have to approve them and then we need to make whatever changes that they don't agree to. I mean, the the whole thing is the cart before the horse again, but.
Be nice if all towns could be the same consistently.
The um, the superintendent said that the Lighthouse Group of Superintendencies is agreed to try to do the exact same thing across their districts. So basically, it's, you know, Cape Cod and Plymouth County.
Well, good luck with that.
Think we all need it. Did we lose Tom?
Anything else, gentlemen, or you wanna make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, I guess? Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, folks, for doing your public service. You guys don't get thanked enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Thanks for coming.
I'll have a good. Take a share.